Welcome everybody to the City of Escalon City Council Meeting and the first City Council Meeting of the 2020s. Would you please join me in salute our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Merkin.
Here.
Councilmember Crumming.
Councilmember Lojaro.
Here.
Mayor Protam Alves.
Here.
Mayor Swift.
Here. And we will go right on to the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature, interacted upon by single action unless requested by an individual or by an individual council member for, or a member of the public for that matter, for special consideration. For example, regarding item number two, I will be abstaining from voting on check number nine, six, eight, nine.
Move to approve consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and approved to approve the consent calendar. We'll proceed with the vote on this particular item. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes to approve the consent calendar five to zero. Staff communications.
Just a couple of items. Part of our budget for 1920 was that we would be hiring a police officer in January based on the mid-year budget review. And I'm working on that, but I just wanted to know from the council if it was okay to proceed with hiring that position, or if you want to see the mid-year budget review prior to that. I'm not anticipating any great changes. In fact, I recently got a statement from our Risk Management Association where we get our liability insurance and workers' comp. And we had some savings coming from both liability and workers' comp of $75,000. So basically, we're in a pooled risk management, so they estimate what our payments are. And when you don't have claims against those, then you actually get that money back. So we have some retro adjustments. And I don't really have anything that I can, sometimes what I will do is roll them forward to future years, but there's no claims that are evident and they're not allowing me to do that. So we're actually receiving some savings of about $75,000 through the risk management. So I still plan to come back to the council with the mid-year budget. I just wanted to find out if we could start moving forward with hiring that position.
The plan was to have two officers. The promise was to have two officers.
Correct.
At this point, I don't know how, where you're at in that process, but are you fairly far along? And at what point do you feel that you're confident to say that you do not see any red flags that would prohibit this?
Currently, I did a pretty good chunk of review specifically towards our revenues. And I'm not, I'm not seeing anything in regards to our general fund that's gonna cause the red flag. In fact, that's why I brought up the savings, because I'd seen that as a positive.
How long does it take for you to get to the point you had the other part of it done before you know it?
Well, it really depends upon what other things come across my desk most of the time. And like I said, I think at the next meeting, which is on January 21st, I'm hoping to have that mid-year budget review there.
Worst scenario, what would we have that would not let us hire the extra police officer?
I mean, that would be up to council if there was some big change in the budget and was a bigger deficit than when we were originally anticipating. But I'm not, I'm not anticipating a big change in that deficit.
The likelihood of offering an officer a package between now and the next meeting is what? What's that likelihood?
I, the number one applicant doesn't go to his psychological and medical employments until January 28th and February 5th.
Yeah, we're okay there.
It won't be until after February that we make any job offer.
But we're still, I mean, we've started that process. There are, there will be some costs that are incurred, so just making sure that we're okay.
Is consensus to proceed then?
Wait, I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Where does the $75,000 go that's coming back?
Well, it's a combination because it's spread out based on, workers' comp is based on their payroll. So that would be spread out between general fund and our enterprise funds, water, sewer, storm.
That's what I'm contributing to it.
Correct, yes.
Do you have a breakdown on that?
I do not, no.
Do you have any idea approximately?
Well, the biggest chunk of workers' comp is going to be in police, because that's our largest payroll. So I would anticipate at least 50% of it probably being in general fund.
I mean, I'm not planning on jumping here, but I know that there's a chart in here that tells you in the audit, that tells you each section and what, what each section is, you know, in terms of you the police, Public Works, you know, that goes into the audit, and therefore that goes in our general fund. And I would imagine that the percentages are gonna be taken out, or you'd be putting back, you know, probably gonna be similar.
Similar, yeah.
You know, it's like 48% police, and you're therefore 48% of workers' comp, something like that.
Right.
Are we okay consensus wise to let Tammy continue on?
We'll just keep on with the process, but of course, we'll have the next meeting. We'll, I'll try and get that mid-year to you.
Okay, what else you have?
That's all I have. Did you have something?
I just wanted to update the council that we mailed out letters to the property owners in town regarding their property. So we've given them about two and a half weeks to respond to the first one. We'll see where we're at with by then and what type of responses we get. And then we'll mail it out one more time. I can update you at the next meeting with any responses. And then we'll give them another two weeks to try to get some information out of them. And it's voluntary. I didn't, I didn't threaten them.
I apologize if I missed something. Would it be possible for us to like to see that letter either, shoot, maybe you already did, and that's why I'm apologizing?
I had sent it to Ed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you mind just sending it to the rest of us?
Sure.
I'm just, just to be curious, you know, just.
How many letters is it that you sent out?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. And how much acreage in the thirty-one letters did you assume that were out there?
Altogether, which would be commercial, residential, I wanna say it was close to 100.
Acres.
Acres, yeah. But I have to, I'll double check. But that's everything together. So that's all the vacant lots in town, including the single individual lots that you can build houses on, all the multi-family, all the commercial.
How much is residential versus other areas? What percentage of that that you sent out would be residential?
I believe we have about 20 lots that are residential in the remainder.
In terms of acres, do you have any idea?
It's in the housing element. I could, I could pull that number for you. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I calculated probably close to, what was it I looked at? High 30s, almost 40 acres.
That sounds about right. I wanna say around 42 to 48, but I'm not absolutely sure.
Yeah, that's what I was coming up with. But I missed a couple, actually. And I forgot about, well, I don't know if that would be considered residential on the old landscaper's property.
Galloway.
Oh, Galloway.
Yeah, is that considered?
That's commercial.
That's commercial, okay. So that would be.
Everything along 120 is commercial.
McKinney has residential, or multiple housing, or multiple.
Everything that's commercial has the potential to build multi-family. We changed that in our, in our municipal code about two cycle, two or three cycles ago in the housing element. So if you have commercial property, you can apply for a planned development or preliminary design.
Okay.
And you could build multi-family.
Good enough.
Okay.
Oh, and then we will be putting out a request for proposals this week regarding our building and plan check services for the building department. It's been a while since we've done that.
Currently, we're dealing with a copy out of Newman.
Yes. And so we'll be putting that. CSG consultants.
CSG, that's what it was.
Yeah. And so we'll be putting that out, anticipating closing it by the end of the month, and then having somebody selected either February, March.
Okay.
How many people will be solicited for those RFPs for that?
We put it on our public purchase software. And then we try to contact anybody that's contacted us in the past inquiring. And then I plan to also give it to surrounding cities in case they're interested in applying. So we'll end up sending it to San Joaquin County, Stanislaus County, City of Modesto.
One of the complaints I receive frequently is the fact that nobody's around all week long, and it's hard to get things done sometimes.
Yeah.
Will this address that issue?
Currently, no. We don't have that much development at this time.
So we're still two days a week?
We're still with Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Our engineer, how many days a week?
Two days a week.
And what days are those?
They're both here on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The building inspector is usually between eight and 10. However, if his inspections run longer than that, he honors all inspections. And then our engineer is here between eight and noon, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we coordinate it to where they're all, they're all here on the same days that we can expedite projects and move things along.
If you had to have an in-house engineer or building inspector, and you know, the additional costs will therefore be put towards what the permits and the permit, permitting process. So it'd be a bit of a double edged sword. You want someone here all, all week long, but now it's gonna cost you a lot more.
Yeah, and at this.
It's a trade-off.
Yeah, and at this time, I don't think you would.
It's a multitasking.
Yeah. And at this time, we don't, we haven't, I mean, we rarely get anybody complaining about that schedule unless if they're in a hurry, which at that point, they can imply we have a process where they could do a special inspection. They pay a little bit more, an extra fee, and we get them to come out the day they want.
Sure. Okay, anything else?
Two minor things. First is looking at the preliminary numbers. Our overall stats will probably be about 7% in our UCR stats, which are uniform crime reporting. Primarily, biggest jump is in our larcenies. Everything else seems to be down, which is good, even Burton. But larcenies is about the only thing, and they went in. And I will be out of the office from the eighth until probably till the first of the month due to a surgery. So Sergeant Flores and Lackey will be running the shop.
Very good, very good. Take care of them.
Who's in charge of the signage in the City of Escalon?
Development Services, City.
Who is?
The city, so I guess.
What department?
Our department, Development Services.
What, what kind of signs are your?
Oh, two signs, actually. First of all, the population sign in our city, and then the other one is street signs.
So that's Public Works.
Yeah.
So the population signs, we've recently, I talked to the superintendent about getting those updated.
Yeah, we're down about three or four thousand people.
And then I also turned in today the California Park Street.
I'm sorry?
Today, I turned in to Public Works, the California and Park Street signs that are missing.
Thank you.
There are several missing around town.
Yeah, what's the deal with that? Have people started to steal them now?
I can only guess that.
Wow, what an.
I can't imagine that we're taking them down, so.
No.
Ours are there, so yes, somebody's probably taken them.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, if there's nothing else under staff communications, we will proceed to matters presented from the audience. At this time, the public may address the City Council on any item, none of the agenda, but that is within the authority of the council. The speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. And please, Chief, if you wouldn't mind, just, you know, keep an eye on that. And the termination of whether an item is within the authority of the council is a discretionary decision made by the mayor, but hopefully her thing will be clean tonight. Okay, who would like to speak first, please?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Kurt Danziger, 389 Noni. A couple of things. One, now that we're gonna move ahead with the absent sales tax for the police department, do we have anything scheduled to, i.e. a town hall where council gets behind it, tries to get out the vote? What are we doing along those lines? Hopefully, we don't fall in the same trap that the school district did when they went through their bond, especially if you're gonna pay 40,000. Number two, hopefully sometime in the near quarter here, we get an update on what we're doing with the treatment plant and how that's going to affect Heinz Food, what we're gonna do with their permit to make them come into compliance with the suggestions from PACE to get their, their affluent to our treatment plant in a, in a much better manner, treatable manner. So I'm just hoping we can hear something from the city in the next couple of months to get, get that moving along, and we don't forget it. Thank you.
Couple of very good ideas. Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak tonight, please?
Danny Fox, 1510 Adriana. I'll be less than five minutes, chief. Happy New Year. It's been busy. December, the last couple of weeks in December, football team won the state championship, had to postpone Christmas on Main Street, did it on Sunday, had a ticker tape. I'm here to let the mayor and the city council know that tomorrow I'll be ordering five signs that go on the five entrances of the city. As you know, we have two out there now from the 2010 football state championship and the 2011 baseball state championship. So I'm gonna order five, should be in about the end of February. And so whether or not the city or the mayor, or you wanna get with the Andrew Beam, the coach, or someone from the school district to present those, that'll be up to the council and up to the mayor. So I think it'd be good if the coach went out and put them up along with the, some of the players. But then again, that could be Superintendent Public Works' job. The two current ones there now is the gold with the yellow with the gold or purple lettering signifies a state championship in 2010. Below, that's the purple one that signifies the state baseball championship in 2011. So the one that I'm gonna order is gonna be purple and gold, and it'll be on the top. There's two there now. As you may know, we'll just drop those down if that's okay, and then put the third one indicating the championship from this year, 2019. So they'll be coming, then I'll give them to you, Mayor, and you can see how you wanna do it from there, but just.
Well, don't forget about you. I mean.
Well, I'm not worried.
I think you were spiriting.
I already forgot about me a long time ago. So this is for the council, give it to the football team and the school district, and get them up on the five entrances of the city. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. And like I say, just, I want you to be there too. I mean, this is your idea, and it's, somebody's taking the bull by the horns, and I appreciate it very much on behalf of the city council. Anybody else like to speak on any non-agendized items? We do have a few agendized items coming up that there will be an opportunity to speak on, but this is your chance to speak if, for anything that is non-agendized. Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to, I think he's bouncing up and down, public hearing. Okay. Item number three, consideration of adopting an increase in water service fees based on the water rate study report. And Tammy, I think I'm gonna give this to you.
Yes. So the city last conducted a water rate study in 2015, and the rates were last increased March 1st, 2019. A water rate study was necessary at this time to ensure revenue sufficiency of, of the water system for the next five years and to demonstrate the city's ability to repay a state loan for funding of a new groundwater well. The city did engage with Hansford Economic Consulting LLC to examine the current, current and projected water system revenue needs. The consultant's analysis demonstrates a need to increase water rates over the next five years to achieve city, state, and federal drinking water requirements of the water system. Rate studies typically, are typically conducted every three to five years to ensure the revenue sufficiency. The purpose of this study is to determine the level of funding required to adequately, adequately, sorry, fund the water system safely, provide the residents and business of the city with a clean, safe, and reliable portable water, potable water system that meets state and federal requirements. The city does make every effort to provide its customers with water in most efficient and cost-effective manner. And the consultant did present the draft report at a workshop on October 28th, and then again at our regular council meeting of November 18th, the council accepted the water rate study report and directed staff to move forward with a Prop 218 notices. Prop 218 notices were mailed to affected parcel owners and tenants on Friday, November 22nd. Articles were run in the Escalon Times, October 30th and November 27th, noticing a public workshop as well as presenting information on the proposed rates. Notices were also posted in the Escalon Times with the notice of the public hearing on December 25th and January 1st, and information was posted on the city's website and Facebook page. Tonight, the council should conduct a public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the proposed fees. The city's rate consultant, Catherine Hansford, with Hansford Economic Consulting is present for the public hearing and available to present the report findings or answer any questions regarding the report. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the city clerk shall complete the tabulation of all written protests received, including those received during the public hearing, and report the result of the tabulation to the city council. In the conclusion of the public hearing, the city clerk or designee determines that additional time, if at the conclusion of it, there is additional time needed, then we would take certain steps and prolong this. Attached to the staff report is the resolution to adopt the proposed water service fees, the water rate study dated November 5th, 2019, the Prop 218 notice that was sent out, and the November 18th staff report along with the water study report.
Okay, very good. What I'd like to do is, you might be dive right into the public hearing in this case. Okay, I declare this public hearing to begin regarding the potential water rate increase. And let's just start out, if anybody has any questions or concerns from the audience. And I'm gonna let you walk me through the rest of this here, because essentially, what we need to do now, we did receive some comment, right?
We received some protest letters, a total of 22.
Okay.
So we're not near.
Majority protest.
The majority protest.
I wanna make sure everybody here has an opportunity to speak or ask any questions to Catherine or anybody else if you have a chance, so. Only once. Hi.
Hi. My name's Deborah. I just moved here from Modesto, and I would like to know why. My water always smells like dead dog, and it tastes disgusting. I wash my clothes four or five times before I can even wear them. That's absolutely disgusting. I live right behind here, 2037 Swanson. Any of you are welcome to come drink water out of my fountain at any time. It is absolutely awful. Nothing, not my kids do not touch water around here at all. Everything goes through my filter. Why am I paying so much money? And why do you wanna increase it? This is absolutely horrible. I was at work and like seven or eight guys came to my house, so my husband took care of them, and they had to go and drain the water because, oh, even though I live in the middle, it shouldn't be an issue? That's still an issue. They went and drained it, and for like three days, it was okay. And now it smells like old wet dog again. That's horrible. Why am I, like, that's disgusting.
Have their Public Works been out to look at?
I, I'm not sure.
Been there.
Yeah, I think that's what you're saying.
They keep telling me that it's nothing, that it's not an issue. But no one wants to drink the water from my sink. But no one wants to drink the water from my sink. My house is open right now. My nanny is there. I have a living nanny. Go ahead, go ask her. Tell her that you want to drink some water. I won't even touch it. It smells so disgusting. So why do you guys want to increase the price? It's not an old house. It was built in two thousand and five. There should be no issues. I work really hard to have a house and pay my bills, but why do you want to increase the price when the water is absolutely disgusting?
Deborah, I'm sorry to hear about that. I had no idea that, like I said, this is the first I've heard about anybody with that situation in town. And that doesn't mean that I want to discount it because I don't.
I put it on Facebook.
Serious problem, yeah.
Before I had a living nanny, I had a daycare person that lived on Vine. I put it on Facebook, and she was like, me and all my neighbors have complained, and no one has done anything about it. And Swanson is not near Vine, like, maybe we're sharing the same water. But like, I'm sure if I have that problem, other people have that problem.
Yeah, yeah. Now, you're on Swanson?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's right behind here. Like, you can see my bathroom from right here.
Right. No, no, we're in the same neighborhood. We're in the same neighborhood. That's why, yeah. So that's a, that's... So what-
Come over, come over for a drink. You'll be really, really pleased.
Your basketball works come out, right? And they've come out, and they're saying that it's not... That it's got to be something else. What are they saying?
So I'm Josh. I'm her husband. So they came out, and they said usually when you're on the end of a line, you can get like a gross taste of the water. But we were straight off the main line, so it shouldn't be a problem, but it still is.
Yeah. But it's dead dog, not chlor- not chloriny, not-
No, I would rather it be chloriny than what it smells like.
Yeah.
And like, I'll put my things through the dishwasher like four times because it's like, it's disgusting. I have got little kids. I don't want them to use that, like... And you guys are saying that you want to increase the pay of it, like, no, I don't want to pay nothing for it. You guys should be paying me to put that crap in my house. Like, that's disgusting.
Has neighbors indicated they have the same?
One of my neighbors that they did, and I don't talk to any of my, like, I work all the time. I don't have a wife.
Yeah.
It's definitely something we can look further into, and again, I would add, I hadn't heard about this issue, so.
Yeah, there's anything we can do to fix it and solve this problem, that's, that's, that's no way to be... Your water's not supposed to be like that.
No, it's disgusting.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate you guys speaking up and telling us about this. So thank you guys very much. Okay, the public hearing continues, please.
Hi, I'm Luis Benegas, and I'm not questioning the increase of the water rates at all. I hearing, I came because I'm interested in the water for Escalon. I've lived in Escalon for two years now. And I noticed the same thing. I'm on Genevieve Drive, on one four, sorry, one four five six Genevieve Drive. And I've had the same issue where I don't use the water to drink or to cook. Because I've noticed since I moved to Escalon that my, my skin, I started having skin issues. And my dermatologist said that it was probably the water. And I said, oh, you know, I never paid much attention, but listening to what they said, I'm like, yeah, I'm new to Escalon for two years, and it's, I still have issues with drinking the water, and I've changed the filter multiple times. I'm hoping that the water does get looked at. I've thought about testing the water, which I'm considering it.
Yeah.
Mainly for the reasons that when I drink the water, it's, I boil the water if I'm having coffee or tea, and I have to throw it away, so I just buy water, that I boil that to have tea and water, and, sorry, coffee. So just listening to a fellow Escalonian, I felt like I needed to voice my concerns as well. But I was only here to listen just to what's going on, but after hearing that, I felt like, I felt compelled to say like, yes, I'm having similar issues with the water.
Oh, I'm glad you did. And the same thing, it smells like-
It does smell, yeah, I boiled it before, and right before drinking the water, I'm like, oh, this doesn't taste good. So I've changed my filter in my refrigerator multiple times, and so I just don't drink the water, nor do I use it for cooking.
Yeah.
But I do wash and everything else.
Can we, can we have public works go out and take samples at these two residences and run-
Yeah, we do, we do sampling.
But I want to sample at the site.
I understand that. I was going to say, we do do sampling, like, and forgive me because I don't remember how often it is. But we're always looking for residents to do the samples for us, so definitely keep them on that. But we can do a special sampling at this point, too, yes.
And I thought about, like I said, I thought about doing it myself, and like I said, just listening to somebody else, I felt like I needed to voice my, myself as well.
Yeah, no, no problem, no problem. We don't want anybody to have water like that in town.
Well, I've actually, I've talked to a few other people, especially when I first moved to Escalon. I said, do you guys have issues with the water? And everyone's like, no. And I, I came from Linden, and I lived off of a water well, and so coming here was like, well, the water doesn't, it's not, it's not great.
There's nothing in the world like well water. I mean, you know, I will agree with that.
Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this topic? If you've heard any similar issues or anything like that, please let us know, okay? Or if you want to speak on this topic from any other angle or ask Catherine any questions. Okay, well, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to council for a decision.
What are we currently paying bimonthly for water? What is there an average, or what is it by the gallon we're paying for?
So there's, there's two charges. There's a base charge and there's a usage charge. Currently, the average home is eighty-two, eighty-one bimonthly, so that's for two months.
Eighty-one?
Yes.
And that's the average?
Correct. That's estimating based on a typical family, single family.
What rate, when does it hit the use rate?
Well, you pay for all your usage.
What I mean to say is, when does it go up, at what point?
So the base, the base charge is fifty-one, forty-five, so everything above the fifty-one, forty-five would be based on its twenty-eight thousand gallons that that eighty-two, eighty-one is based on.
The fifty-one, forty-five is monthly?
That is two months. That's bimonthly.
So what gets it to eighty-two, eighty-one is the passing of the twenty-eight thousand gallons?
Correct.
And then that are current rates. Where are our projected rates supposed to be in a couple of years?
So, so utilizing that same twenty-eight thousand gallons for our households, the rate would go up to ninety-nine, twenty-seven this year for two months. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, it's estimated to be at one oh seven, thirty-seven, again, using the twenty-eight thousand gallons.
Yeah, so the minimum, oh wait, that's after the twenty-eight.
But that includes the base. The base is going to go up to, from fifty-one, forty-five as a current to fifty-eight, ninety-five in two thousand and twenty, sixty-three, sixty-nine in two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, and all these numbers are based on analysis from our consultant?
Correct, based on information that we've given her from our systems.
And what's the goal?
To maintain our water system.
Maintain, so this does nothing more than maintain. It doesn't put money aside for the future pipeline from the-
It does.
It does, okay, how much?
So it's, it's based on the capital improvements that the water system's going to need and to pay back the loan for the new ground well, and-
How much is the loan for the new ground well?
Approximately one point five, since we haven't gotten it yet, but one point five.
And that's, this money we're raising in the next couple of years will help pay that loan back. Now, how much of this money we're raising goes towards savings on the water line?
So we're currently keeping the hundred and four thousand that we received from Tracy to go towards that line. And Catherine, I don't know if you can help me for the surface water. We're collecting, in the first five years, an inflated cost of six million. Is that correct in the table four?
Correct. The first five years.
Catherine, you might come up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Yeah, so for the surface water system, the first five years, the cost is a little over six million dollars. And then, sorry-
For the first five years?
Yes, that's the first five years.
So the six million dollars is reflected in the rate increase?
Yes.
That is, that is money that's going to be generated from the rates, not loans and debt service on that loan?
I just wanted to check. I have a table like that.
It's-
Sorry, my paper's all falling apart. So it's table A five.
It's basically a ten million dollar project, right?
Yes, but I just wanted to check that there is a loan component, but I'm not sure how much of that was for the first five years versus the second five years. I just wanted to check on that.
That ten billion dollars is today's price?
Correct.
So in six years, it could be, what, fifteen?
Usually costs go up about three percent a year on average, so.
And the surface water project is fully funded, whether it's through the rate increase or the rate increase, including the debt service component-
That's right.
-through two thousand and twenty-six, right? So this is to gen- this is to add basically ten million dollars to our water fund over the next six years for the surface water project.
I don't think we're adding the full amount, though.
No. So there, actually, the way I have it modeled is that that six million in the first five years would be paid for with a loan, and that the debt service each year-
The five hundred and sixteen thousand?
Yes.
So a half a million dollar debt service.
Annually.
Annually, starting-
And-
Twenty-one, twenty twenty?
No, that's not till- The debt service doesn't even start till twenty twenty-four. And then, or in full, it's full in twenty twenty-six.
Right, so actually, you would start the loan payments after this first five years of the rates.
At the end of these rates, that's, that increase is pretty significant at the end.
Yeah, it's not quite five hundred. It's two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year.
So the, I'm looking at- Surface water estimated facility cost twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five is ten million, four hundred and nine thousand and nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, less cash funding of two point one million. Total loan amount, eight point two million. Annual debt service, five hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Total payments, ten million, three hundred and thirty-six.
Yes, so that is correct. What I did was, you have to build up a one-year annual debt service reserve. So I split that between the first two years to build up that fund, and thereafter annually, it's five hundred and sixteen thousand.
Okay, and the interest on this project is two million dollars?
Yes, that's, oh, yeah, let me check on that. That is, yes, correct.
It all depends on what, how you decide to finance this project down the road, if we decide to finance this project down the road.
Correct, and I do believe that there's some opportunities to get some grants from the state. And this is, you know, a best estimate of financing that I could provide at this time. This would be financing through the state at two point two percent over twenty years. But there is opportunity to either get a portion of that grant funded or the, you know, the interest rate could be lower at that time. You might be able to pay it back over thirty years instead of twenty years and so forth. But yeah, this is just, I think I do have a sentence here in the report that the city will be seeking the best sources of financing at the, at the time that you go to get that money.
What's the projected timeline for the actual building of this pipeline?
So we phased it out.
Yes, we phased it. So starting in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, and it's over one, two, three, four, five years.
When you say five years, over five years, we're going to actually start construction?
Yes, so the first phase of construction would start in two thousand and twenty-two.
And what would that be?
It would be pipeline.
Now, we haven't had an environmental impact report done yet, have we?
No.
What could that do to the cost?
When I talk to SSJID and their engineering, because these are pipelines that are going in right of ways, the, the environmental document is not going to be extensive.
Yeah, coming from somebody who doesn't pay for it. So how long is the projected time to get this line in place?
So the whole project is estimated to take out five years.
Five years, starting in twenty-one, I mean, twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
So I mean, twenty-seven, it'll be finished theoretically?
Yes.
And twenty-seven, what will our water rates be?
Well, they're not projected out completely to that.
Well, I did project them out, but I would say, you know, once you start getting past those first five years, it really all needs to be relooked at, especially-
It's all going to change because the prices are all going to change.
The prices will change, your financing will, you know, I doubt your finance will be exactly what I've put in here. So there is a projection in here, but you just need to be revisited at year four.
What's your projection?
So the bimonthly service charge, which is currently fifty-one dollars and-
That's the base rate.
Forty-five.
Forty-five cents, thank you. I have to keep switching between tables. So first year, we said that that would increase to fifty-five dollars, thirty-four cents. By year five, that was seventy-six dollars, thirty-two cents. Year six, that goes up to eighty-two dollars, seventy-one cents.
Oh, I have it.
It's table nine in your report, if you have it. It shows, and then it, by year ten, it's at a hundred and fourteen dollars.
Bimonth?
Bimonthly.
Bimonthly? That's the base rate?
Base.
Anything under twenty-eight thousand gallons?
Under thirty thousand. Well, it changes be-
It depends upon the, the type of service. It depends upon your, your pipeline.
So it's essentially doubled over the next ten years, right, from what it currently is?
Yeah.
Which is a ten percent increase a year?
Yeah.
What about grants? What's the likelihood of any grants?
To be honest, the state changes their rules every year on this. If, if there's some link with either a consolidation project or a link with groundwater sustainability, I'd say you have a good chance of getting some grants. Currently, you know, if you don't have either of those two avenues, not high.
The idea is to bring the line here. Are we going to have storage tanks or underground water rejuvenation, or what are we going to do with it?
We will need a storage tank and a pump.
Is that included in all this?
Yes.
Do we have a cost for enactment of the Groundwater Sustainability Act requirements?
No. We have some estimates.
But they're not included in these rates?
Well, I did include some increases in our budget, but, I mean, we're- we're still about five years out for some of those in implementing the plan. So, but part of our basin-wide plan includes the connection to surface water for Escalon. So grants will be looked at basin-wide, too, for all of those. So it's not only our eyes that are looking for those grants, it's our GSA that's looking for, for money for those also.
Do we know what those managerial costs or the bureaucratic costs are going to be now that we've got to manage our groundwater?
No, the plan is just being accepted, so we, we still don't have good numbers for that.
That's going to be an additional cost that at some point is going to have to roll into these rates, right?
Yeah, and we added some additional operation cost in these rates also for that.
Can I say something real quick? Just in response to the people that, that came tonight, and it's easy for us to talk about this stuff. I mean, we're around it all the time, and, but just to make kind of clear where Escalon's at, so you guys know. So we're all on the same water, right? It goes into this big aquifer underground. That's what we all draw our water from. So it's, you know, why some people's water smells different or tastes different, that's something I think we're all in favor. The city will help you out, get that tested, figure out what's going on. What we're talking about now, and it pertains to you saying, why are we going to raise your rates? Why are you even considering that because your water's so bad? The reason we are raising rates is because it's the only way we can pay to improve the quality of the water. We're talking about bringing a pipeline in of surface water. So instead of this aquifer that's getting contaminated by all of these different things going on around here, if we bring in this pipeline, it's going to be cleaner water. It's coming in from Woodward Reservoir. It's coming in from Woodward Reservoir, and we would basically mix it, and it would, um, hopefully increase the quality of our water, and, which would eliminate some of these things. So, um, but I just want to explain a little bit of that to you guys, so you understand. The reason we are to a point where we have to raise rates is so that we can move forward with this project, which will, in turn, create better quality water for the community. So that's kind of an explanation I would throw out there.
Yeah, and unfortunately with, at the rate that the state is going with regulating the groundwater supply, you know, we're looking at a ten million dollar, uh, you know, potential figure, possibly more for this. You know, another great unknown out there is at what point and how much will they regulate that supply and that what cost will that be? And do you really wanna have all your rays in one basket? Uh, most people in the water industry say, of course you diversify, that's, you know. But what this, uh, five-year plan does, and I may want to point out that each of these five years, there will be at some point, that time will ring to the council. The question is, do you want to go ahead and go with the planned rate increase for that next year? We'll be doing that five times. What this five-year plan does is it puts us in a position where if we want to go ahead and get going on that pipeline, we can. Versus now, where we're not in any position like that, and we're therefore dependent upon groundwater and whatever that may entail to our drinking water supply to each every, in every house in this town. So this is a motionable item, uh, keep that in mind, please, uh, council members.
I got a couple of things, the other question is, on this money, where's this money gonna be held in? It's gonna be in a, in a, uh, district by itself?
It's, it's held in the Waters Capital Fund.
It's in the capital fund, it's a sub-fund inside of the Capital Water Fund?
Well, it would, it can be reserved, um, or restricted to the surface water.
So my question would be, is if we're gathering all this money, if we're not gonna be taking and moving around anywhere, this money's gonna be set expr- aside and expressly for this water line?
Correct.
And that, we can guarantee that, correct?
Yes, these are estimates, so, I mean, I can't guarantee the exact funding, but yes.
So with this idea, the money we collect in, in the name of this project should be isolated and kept directly for that, independent of any other transfers or any of that stuff, because it's, it's a burden on these people.
So, but the first.
Do that to them, I think we need, we owe it to them to make sure that money goes where it goes.
Is that within the power of a council, do you even move that around?
Hold on just a minute. Catherine, can you correct me, are we even collecting surface water monies in the first five years?
So the money from the City of Tracy is going into that.
Correct.
Fund, um, and I was just gonna check on the cash flow table.
So if that money's going in from Tracy into this water pipeline, that should soften up some of the impact?
Which it has been taken into consideration.
And this numbers of the consequences of that consideration?
I'm waiting for her to confirm, because I don't think that there's a whole lot of that pipeline that is in here.
No, okay, so it is, it's the City of Tracy's, um, lease money, and then I've just got the loan proceeds.
We're what?
In which year, though?
A little over half a million dollars? In that, uh.
So currently, there's just over half a million, that's correct. And then each year from City of Tracy, you get almost a hundred and five thousand, and that goes directly into that surface water connection fund. And then I've got loan proceeds coming in from the projected loan in here.
We've got a lot going on, we've got groundwater, you got potential surface water, and then you've got this lease payment that's being sequestered, um, with the intent of using that specifically for the, for the water line. So there's a, there's a lot going on, and there's still a lot of unknowns. We don't know what's the cost of the Groundwater Sustainability Act, uh, is gonna cost. We've got a ten million dollar project for this water line, while we're also doing a one and a half or two million dollar new well. So there's, there's an awful lot going on here, and I'm just not sure that we're, that we need to be doing this much at this time. I'm a proponent for the surface water line, I think we absolutely need to start thinking about how we're gonna bring that in here, but a ten million dollar project and to, to put this kind of burden on the rate payer is pretty, pretty significant.
I believe we can revisit that down the road in a couple of years.
Because that's not included in the first four years of rates.
Correct.
The only thing that's included in the first four years is the monies from Tracy.
Yes, that's right, so the, the repayment of the loan for the surface water is not included in the first, uh, five rate increases that's here for your consideration that went in, the public notices. It doesn't, doesn't include that surface water project cost.
I think Councilmember, uh, Legero, to your point, there are a lot of things going on, there's gonna be a lot of things that are gonna be coming down the road. I'm probably, this is probably gonna be the thing I'm gonna be saying most of everything else this year, you know? A lot of people are moving out of California. We can't move Escalon out of California, so we have to unfortunately react to all the silliness that they are putting on us regulation-wise and, and the rules, and a lot of that's gonna cost money. And to that point, and to the point you made, Councilmember Legero, therefore, it might be this, because we know it's gonna cost us more than it's costing us now, the best option is to keep up. Whether we want to or not, none of us wanna raise these rates, but the alternative, putting your head in the sand, I don't think is leadership and governance either.
Well, I don't think anyone's putting their head in the sand, I think we're just very seriously considering what we're doing here.
And we should.
With all the consequences in front of us. I don't think anyone's putting their head in the sand.
Well, isn't it better if we got a half a million dollars set aside for a ten million dollar project, or we have a half a million dollars set aside for a one point five million dollar project? So if we're gonna go forward with the well, which we are, and you've got a half a million dollars set aside in a, or sequestered for the pipeline, are we not better just taking that money, advancing that? We're gonna have to borrow for the well, or we're gonna have to borrow for the pipeline. You know, so if you got a half million dollars right now set aside, and you can use that for a project that is absolutely, uh, being done and in the process right now, and offset the cost of the debt service on that particular project, uh, you know, I don't know, maybe we're, we're.
Yeah, no, okay.
Just delaying the inevitable, but it's, at least it's going to where we can take a, a closer look at the rates in the first couple of years here. And try and minimize that damage until we are really looking at this, this surface water connection, I, I don't know.
No, that's a good point, I mean, like I say, again, the surface water, what we're looking at with this five-year plan, surface water-wise, it puts us in that position to be able to act upon it down the road. But you're right, Councilmember Legero, we know, again, the state is requiring us to put that well in, so you know that's gonna happen. So. Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that could be a possibility on the table.
Well, it would get us to a point where we get satisfied with part of what we're trying to do, instead of taking a big mouthful, not sure we can swallow.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, realistically, I think you're, in the long run, you're probably gonna have to do both.
There's another thing to keep in mind, not only are you gonna raise your water rates, we're looking at sewer next. And we were quoted some serious prices on that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we were, yeah, we were.
And you cap that with this, and you put them all together, it's a lot, it's a lot of stress on young families.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it is, yeah, it is.
And again, I understand the reality is that we have to do something. The question is how we do it and when we do it. And I think that that's something we need to give strong consideration to. I think the idea of just passing this because we need to do it is not the way I wanna deal with it. I mean, I personally would entertain the idea that Councilman Legero had. I think if that's a way we can slow it down a little bit to get a better look at what we're doing and see, the next couple of years are really, are going to be that way. Because we can always do this, it's not like it's gonna go away.
So are you.
It's not gonna change anything.
Right, so you're suggesting hold off on, uh, on passing the entire water rate study, or are you talking about passing it, and then in a couple of years, see where we're at with the pipeline part, which is actually the, the idea anyway?
I would like to revisit, uh, Legero said, which was basically, look at taking that money and moving it over to the well, we get the well in, that solves a lot of our problems. And it'll also satisfy the, uh, state's mandates. Meanwhile, we can look at how we're gonna be affected with other rate increases, like the sewer and stuff. I just don't wanna jump on this like this full bore, then turn around in two weeks from now or three weeks from now and do the same thing with the sewer.
Right, right.
I mean, to me, it's just like.
So do you want?
We need to be a little smarter in how we dish this out.
Right, so, yeah.
We're, we're one point three million dollars a year on our water cost today, that's what our quote is. Of the one point three, sixty percent of that is from employees. So my question would be this, if in fact the city grew and it's contemplating some growth, we're looking at some senior housing and possibly something else. If that money were to come in, would these rates stay stagnant, or would they increase regardless of the growth of the town? And so my point is, if we're gonna grow the town in certain areas, and it's not gonna improve anything, why are we growing?
So what you're asking is, do you want to not, not do anything at the moment, or pass, keep, keep in mind, we're gonna revisit these, these projected increases every year?
Yeah, I know.
So we didn't include for large growth in here each year, because that's not been.
I understand.
What we experienced. So that, again, then that would be when you come around to your year two, to look at the rates, if there's been a large jump in revenue, you guys could make that decision to make the change. Now, I, I think you kind of said, like, personnel was fifty percent, but of the one point three, but it's, it's not, it's only like, um, thirty percent of that.
Well, I think if you go back a couple of meetings ago, I think I asked that question, I was told it was sixty percent.
Not of one point three?
Well, the water rates, according to my question asked and answered, was sixty percent of the cost of the water rates was, at that time, sixty percent was employee-based. And I, I don't know where it came from, I could go back on the tape, probably look it up and find out, but if it's not sixty percent, and now you're telling me it's thirty percent?
So of operating cost, our operating cost for the first year is estimated at nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred thousand is personnel cost. The one point three includes, um, all of your capital, um, your well, your meter replacement, your, um, water line replacements, and those kinds of, um, costs are also included in that.
Yeah, okay, now, if, if what, uh, Councilman Legero suggests, if we borrowed the money that we have in there for the water line and did the well, that's not gonna change the calculations a whole lot. It's just gonna, uh, basically give us some time to rethink what we're doing, instead of committing ourselves to something here until we know for sure, because like I said, in three weeks, I'm sorry, you're gonna have the sewer to deal with.
Three weeks? Are we that close to the sewer study?
No, oh, well. Well, you still, I, I, because of the holidays, I haven't got to do a whole lot, I have scheduled a meeting this week, so.
So what do you think, how long?
It's probably gonna be a couple of months.
Okay.
I, uh, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, I was gonna ask, I know we've talked about that, that hundred-four thousand from Tracy before, and that is something that, I remember when we passed the study five years ago, uh, you know, for the, our water rates then, the question was asked, how does that money get removed from that lockbox that it's in? And the answer was that it has to be a council decision. So my question is this, is, because it almost sounds like there are two different things that we're talking about, we're, you know, one is looking at the water rates and passing the water rate study and implementing year one. And then the other question is regarding the hundred-four thousand a year, can we move that to something else? I'm almost seeing this as two different questions, am I correct on that?
I, I, I would pose that to you guys, yeah.
I think I'm correct, I, I think so, I think so, I think it's two different questions, where we can come back later and say, you know, at the next, at another meeting and say, by the way, the hundred-four thousand, we want to move that in this direction, that's council direction. You know, but that would be a different decision. You know, versus the water rate study, and do we want to implement this and start with the rate increase for year one?
I have a question, um, so in this study that we're looking at right here, from nineteen through twenty-nine, that includes the well and the pipeline, correct? Okay, so for the next ten years, if we pass this, theoretically, if these numbers stay correct, we're gonna have our well, which is a state mandated thing that's already in the works that we've gotta do, and we're gonna have this SSGID pipeline bringing in surface water. Based upon those things, we've, it, you know, the, the city manager, the staff, they've done their due diligence, you've done the study. I think that, uh, you know, based upon these facts, I think it's important to bring the pipeline in, we have to do the well, this is a study we have. Uh, I, in my thinking, in my process, I don't like raising rates on anybody, just like everybody up here, you know? That's the last thing we wanna do is charge people more money, but the, the reality is that this is an expensive town, and the reality is that costs go up even for, uh, and especially for local government. So with that being said, uh, I would make a motion to accept the water rate study, and, um, let me, let me say it exactly right, I would adopt the increase in water service fees based on the water rate study report.
Are we done with discussion?
Uh, no, the motion's been made, and we are looking for a second. And I believe, uh, believe the mayor can second the motion, if I recall, progress rules of order, so I'll second that motion. And motion's been moved and seconded, and, uh, is there a discussion on the motion on the table now?
Is this not a public hearing?
We had the public hearing.
Well, you, you, you had a lot of discussion, right?
Yeah.
You never talk about the rage.
Can we open up the, we reopen the public hearing, right?
I hope you wanna talk about the rage now.
Right, now, I will say, I did open up the public hearing, and I did close the public hearing. I did, I did!
The councils had fifteen minutes to bring up a lot of issues, and I, I, I just have a mic for you to open it up.
I'm opening up the reopening the public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, Danny Fox, fifteen ten, Adriana. Uh, in the study, with the rates, I thought it was good to go. And then, uh, Councilman Legero, and in that study, is monies being collected in the long term to hook up to SSGID, right?
Yes.
Okay, so my, this is my question, one of the city manager, city council goals for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty was to look into ways to hook up to SSGID surface water. So my question is, when that was one of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty city manager council goals, was it already incorporated into the study? Or will, does that mean, uh, if in fact the study, uh, passes in the rates, is that all the work that's gonna be done on looking into ways of hooking up this J, SSGID? And did you in fact complete that goal? Or is there something else?
I think this is one way, this is the way that we're looking at it for completing that goal, is to put us in a position where down the road.
Yeah, it's working towards that goal.
Yeah.
I mean, we're still supposed to be, I mean, we're still looking at other avenues for funding instead of just a loan, and potentially like a grant.
Whether, whether this, the rate, I'm, I'm not concerned personally about the rates, I, I understand where we're trying to get to, uh, in five years, we're five years behind. But I was just wanting to hear whether or not that's the only way we're gonna look at hooking up the SSGID in this particular plan and study.
I think I could respond to that a little bit, so we've talked to SSGID about having them float us or lo- you know, financing it, it's, it's a non-starter. It's just, it just is, I think, it's a non-starter, we've looked at, there are no grants for Escalon, the median housing income in Escalon is too high for the state to give us funding. Those are the two options I think we've explored, the only other way to pay for this is to pass the cost onto the customer, this, it's just apples, it, the way it goes, so.
Yeah, I think it's really, really, really early in that decision-making process, you could have a future council decide, let's say in year twenty-one or twenty-two, uh, when we start looking at, you know, some of the monies that are gonna be collected to establish that one million for, to get financing for the pipeline. That council could say, no, no to that.
Right.
Uh, the count, that future council, the staff could come up with some financing ideas, and that council could go, no to that, okay? So nothing regarding this pipeline is gonna be set in stone tonight.
Okay, but, but, but what has been set in stone that, uh, for SSGID to help the City of Escalon hook up on low interest rate or anything is a no br- no starter, that, that's out.
They haven't been, they haven't opened the door when we have talked to, had those discussions.
And again, here's another thing, this is January sixth, twenty twenty. I don't know about twenty-two, twenty-three, I don't know that the situation's gonna be.
I was just trying to refer, I, I'm referring to the city manager council goal, one of the six or seven, was to look into ways of hooking up the SSGID surface water, and here we are mid-year, and I just, now, I, I understand if that's a no starter with them, thank you.
Kurt Danzger, once again, uh, it's a non-starter, because they were, they're still trying to get PG&E. That's not to say that that doesn't come to fruition sometime in the next eighteen months, and they may have a whole different aspect. I think the problem with what we're looking at tonight is that we shouldn't have included the pipeline in this study, because it's confusing the issue. We're not gonna be putting any money aside for it, the whole idea with the money was to fund the loan, to pave the loan for the, the well, and that's fine. I mean, that's been explained since day one, uh, with Hanson here, and I think that's what we ought to key on. That money, if you take that money out of that account. That money, if you take that money out of that account, and you can, it, you're never gonna tie into that pipeline because no one's gonna ever think you're serious. When you go to Lathrop or you go to SSGID and say, we got a million bucks right here, we know how to save money, and we wanna put it towards it, what can you do for us? You know, hopefully you can get a, a load of no-interest loan from them, uh, that gives you something. But I don't think you ought to confuse it with this rate increase here. You can pass it tonight, your first year is, is coming up, you can look at second, third, fourth, fifth year. Uh, in any of those years, that pi, that pipeline, I doubt you're gonna get any money for that. You know, unless you increase the homes and EDU stock here in town. Um, I, I've asked this question before, and I, I don't know the answer. Are, are the people across the street paying us for their water that they take out of the groundwater? Heinz and.
Not for the groundwater, no.
When are we gonna start charging them? Why don't we take all that money that we could charge them and put that to the pipeline? You know, it's.
That we can at this point.
Well, I'm just, we can do anything we want, but, you know, you gotta have the desire to go do that. If, if, if they can pull out of the same offer we're doing, and, and we're the GSA for them, we need to be charging them, that's, you know.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
You don't get to float for nothing, and, uh, they make plenty of money. I, I sent Tammy the email that I'd received, uh, about Heinz food, and how ninety, over ninety percent of every tomato product in this country and around the world is canned right here, you know, with Heinz food. They're not hurting, you're not, you know, you gotta show some levels to, to be dealing with these kind of people. But, you know, let's not confuse the pipeline with what we're trying to do with this well. And, and I don't know if the state directly mandated the well, they mandated the water flows.
Right.
The maximum daily water flows, which at the time, the Blackwater was, was presenting all of this, uh, and they agreed, if we upgraded the performance of all the three wells that we have right now, we'd meet that standard. And if we're not gonna grow, you know, the, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't need that much money. I think it was nine hundred and fifty thousand instead of a million and a half. But, you know, that's just a talking point out there, so let's just stay focused, uh, on what we're doing here. If we're gonna, you know, have a loan for the well, let's have a loan for the well there. Take that pipeline out of it because none of that money's gonna go there, and, and leave that Tracy money alone. That's, that's the way I look at it. You've been planning on paying for this debt service, you know, for the last few months. You know, I don't, I don't know what would change, you, you still have to pay it back, you know, to the other enterprise account there, or not. Uh, we've seen how other loans have gone, but, uh, I, I think we just stay focused and, and pass what you have before you. Thank you.
Gary Haskin, four seven one, Cabernet Court. Uh, when we get to pipeline money, we've had this discussion before when I was on the council, when Danny was on the council. What we had is over ten years of pipeline money, hundred and four thousand dollars a year, was supposed to go into that bucket for the pipeline. That was mandated by the council. Somewhere along the line, it got diverted, it got taken out of that pot, and it was used to subsidize water. Now we're sitting here, that's so we wouldn't have to raise water rates. We're doing the same thing again. That got it, when we did it the first time, it got us into a position where we had to raise rates extremely high, extremely fast. If we do this again, it's gonna be the same thing. Everybody'd be happy now, you all look like good guys, we're not gonna raise the rates, but then five years down the road, it's all gonna hit the fan again. You know, unfortunately, the state keeps mandating higher and higher water quality. Well, not unfortunately, it's good, but with our wells, we're all aware of nitrate, nitrate problems, asbestos problems, you know, cadmium problems. Uh, problems go on and on and on. If we don't spend the money now and increase rates, which have been ridiculously low compared to other cities, we're gonna be in the same boat again, and it's gonna be not just a little increase, even a moderate is, increase, it's gonna be a major increase. I say, take care of the process, we got it going, it needs to be followed through with it, thank you.
Angelo Blanco, sixteen over Fisk. When we first come here, we opened a meeting, and you wanted us to open to the pot. We didn't know what was gonna be happening, it's like, you wanna vote yes, then you're gonna say, well, what I voted for? Now we know what we voted for, now the young lady got up, she made a nice presentation, and I thought, all the money's gonna, well, it was gonna be ten percent increase, average or whatever, average. And she come up with this, so much is gonna go here, so much to go with pipeline. Then I think you guys were gonna vote on it or something, then Leggero come up and say, well, why should we borrow this or borrow that? She never mentioned nothing about that, all she mentioned was, we raised the rates, and we got this project. Then all of a sudden, you guys gotta change. So what you guys gotta get straight, do we know we're voting on, what you're talking about? Now, do, did you guys vote on a ten percent raise? Tonight? Did you pass it?
No, they haven't passed it.
No.
You haven't passed it yet?
No.
Okay.
We had a motion and a second, and then we reopened a public hearing for the motion on the table.
Yeah, 'cause if you, what I wanna know, if you're gonna vote, what she came up with, are you gonna change it? You know, I don't know, you know, that's what I'm confused, I thought you guys passed it.
No, no, I'm sorry, no, we didn't, no.
For right now, we just know ten percent, nothing.
No, the, the only mo, the motion that's on the table is to accept the water study.
I just was wondering, you know, 'cause she, you know, to start with, like I said, we had nothing to.
Yeah, no, no worries, no worries, yeah.
We know what you guys don't wanna do.
Yeah. No, the motion on the table, Angelo, is to adopt the increase in water service fees based on the water rate study report. So that's what, yeah, so there hasn't been anything decided yet, or anything like that, so. Are there any other questions, or probably more importantly, are there any other questions to Catherine? Or thoughts, comments, please? Please?
I'm, I'm getting more and more confused. Dave Willis, four two five, Salt Town away, I just wanna get it clear. This water rate study is, is for the well.
Yes, the first five years is based for the well.
For the well. It does not touch that money that's being put aside.
Correct, it does not touch it.
Yeah, 'cause to me, that, that money put aside is sacrosanct until we get a pipeline.
Right.
That's all I wanted to get clear, thank you.
Okay, Catherine, yes?
I just wanted to make one comment, and that's regarding the well one A loan from the state. The city currently has a planning loan with the state. When you have a planning loan and then you go forward and, uh, for a construction loan, it's, it's really an automatic thing for them, and they process it pretty quickly. So as far as getting that money for the well, you're in really good shape for that. Um, state changes its regulations every year, so it's there, it's.
It's providing that, that, that the study is accepted, correct?
Correct.
Because that's part of what the well, the loan process was for the well.
Yeah, need to demonstrate the city can repay that loan. So just, just to know, the loan is right there, it's waiting for you.
Yeah.
At the state.
Right.
So are we getting the loan for the well, or are we getting the loan for the pipeline?
For the well.
For the well.
So the rate increases that are coming aboard are paying back the well in addition to saving for the pipeline?
Well, the current savings that we're already doing for the pipeline.
Which are what, the, the rates?
Cell from Tracy, the, the water cell to Tracy.
Okay, so, let's back up here. We were addressing the study based on the fact that we were gonna raise rates to cover the cost of a new well in addition to putting money aside for the next five years for a new pipeline from the reservoir, is that what we said?
So the first three years of it are the, the money from Tracy is being set, continued to be set aside for the surface water line.
Which will give us about eight hundred thousand and nine hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that range.
Plus, yeah, and then after that is when there would be some additional costs in there for the surface water.
On a, on a ten-year plan, or a ten million dollar plan today's price?
Ten, ten million is actually future cost, the estimated future cost.
Do we ever get a legitimate cost from anybody that knows anything about this well, I mean about the.
Yes, I have had multiple engineers look at it, including SSJID, including, um, city of Tracy, including city of Lathrop, all who have had projects with SSJID in relation to the surface water treatment plant, and have told me that the estimates that I have are right in line.
Right in line, and the inflation rate is three percent annually?
Is that about what you'd, I think, okay.
I did a three percent.
So the current price of ten million dollars today for the next, for this to be completed in five years, what would the increase be on the ten million?
So, sorry, actually, the numbers that are in table four of the report, that ten point four million is in inflated dollars.
It's already inflated.
So that's covering the cost of inflation for the next five years?
Yes, uh, ten years, actually.
Yeah, it's actually longer than that because we're not even going to start it until twenty twenty-two.
Now, let's suppose we have a growth spurt, what does that do to any of this? What if we go and build some houses or some senior housing or whatever, what does that do to this whole thing we're doing? Does it stay stagnant, I mean, uh, does it stay the same, or does, is it gonna be reduced, or what?
Uh, well, it could potentially reduce what we have to put in place for rates. Because you're gonna have some connection fees that are gonna help, that can help with that surface water line. Maybe you ha, you can reduce the amount of loan that you need, um, and so it could reduce your debt service.
So it ca, it can, however, you could also go into another drought, so.
Right. But, but, but regardless, this is why we review the potential water rate increase for, there, there's five years of rate increases. Every year we review those increases. At a council meeting, the council decides, do we go ahead with it, or do we not go ahead with it? And at that time, we're armed with the information, where, where do we want to be by now? Have we met it, are we ahead of it, are we behind it? And those go into the decision as to, do we want to go with that year's increase or not? All this does is give us five years of potential increases.
My question is too, and you said you've gone out and looked for, or have you gone out and looked up for grants and other things like that?
Um, not currently on this, I mean, I've poked my head around and talked with others and, um, with our groundwater sustainability agency, we've talked about it, and, um, we know that the state will have some potential funding coming up to support these groundwater sustainability plans to try and do infrastructure, it could be both. It, but, a lot of the times, the grants have to have matching money. So putting the money to the side gives you that, that, um, leverage of having matching money too in a grant.
And that, that makes sense, if there's a benefit to sequestering it and leaving it there, that makes sense to me. As opposed to, you're gonna borrow here and you're gonna borrow here, so you guys got this money sitting here, and you're gonna go into debt for a much cheaper project, you know, and you're still gonna have to go into debt even further for the, for the pipeline. So, if there's a rationale for doing it, that makes sense, so. You know, and I understand that this is a worst-case scenario, these rates are based on the best estimates and what we got going right now and what we're looking to do. But there are huge increases, you know, over, over the next five years after the increases that we've already laid out there. So, we have to have that clarity, we need to make sure that everyone understands what it is that goes into these rates. You know, like Angela has questions about where we're at, you know, why, um, why we're looking at these rates and what's included in that rate. So, you know, we're kind of, we're, we're kind of at the mercy of the, of the rate study. Um, and then from a year-to-year basis, then we go back and reevaluate it, but typically what happens is, it never happens, it's, the rates are what they are, and every year they increase to get to that point, so. There, there's some frustration in that.
Right, well, but, but that's, when that comes up this next year, it'll come up a year from now, you know, like in May of twenty twenty-one, March of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, they're.
Again, now I do recall in the past, when these rates have gone up to a decision, do we wanna accept the rates? It has become a pretty extensive, you know, debate then too, as it should be, as it should be. So, again, I think that there's no reason why it shouldn't be just as vigorous a debate next year, the year after that. I think that when you get to the point where we are seriously looking at beginning to collect those monies for that pipeline, I think that's when, you know, you ask those questions about financing. I think that to Councilmember Leggero's point, when you start really looking at, okay, what are we gonna do with this well? And that hundred and five, hundred and four thousand dollars a year, that's when you ask that question. What is on the table tonight is accepting the, the water rate increase, or specifically this first year increase as part of a five-year plan. Okay, based on the water study that Catherine's group made.
What, what efforts did we make, or have we made, or are we thinking about making, addressing seniors and low income regarding these increases?
That's a good question, I don't think that, that's, unfortunately, has changed with the state.
Yeah, under Prop eighteen, you can't.
You can't.
You can't, because Prop eighteen says what?
You, you can't subsidize so, someone's rates. Uh, you can't charge some people more in order to charge some, the low-income or.
To cover the, to cover others.
I wanna give everybody, uh, in the audience a chance to speak. If they haven't had a chance yet, please do so by now, before I pull it back in, yeah.
Dave Bellinger, fourteen twenty, Winterbrook. Um, just to clarify with the five-year rate increase. At the end of the fifth year, when the, when we've collected all the monies from all the rate increases, will the loan and everything for the new well be paid off?
I'm sorry, what was, what was that first part, David?
So, we're putting in a one point five million dollar well and some other things going on. All the rate increases over the next five years are gonna make a bucket of money. Is that bucket of money gonna cover everything? How much longer past that fifth year are we gonna still be paying on that project? Because based on what I was looking at, you've got between today's rates on the twenty-five thousand average for a homeowner, you're looking at fifty bucks a month, or fifty bucks every other month in the fifth year. So you're looking at twenty-five bucks a month more in year five. You got twenty-five hundred residents right now, give or take, water bills. Annualized, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year. How much are all these projects costing? And in the middle, you're getting threes and fours and fives and six hundred between here and there. I'm trying to figure out how we can't pay off that with all the rate increases. With a one point five million dollar well, what other costs do we have associated that we're trying to pay for with this rate increase?
Yeah, I think Catherine might be able to answer that question for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, part of the revenue requirement with that well one A is the debt service, and there's also additional operations and maintenance costs as well to go with that well. So, um, the, the loan term is, will, will be twenty years. So for five years, you'll still have another fifteen years.
So in year six, that extra seven hundred and fifty grand wouldn't even get close to covering that loan? Why are we kicking it out twenty years if we're gonna continue to rate increase year after year through year ten for a project? I don't understand where that money's going. If you're gonna keep on going, seven hundred and fifty, with increase in population, increase in rate, that's eight hundred, then it's nine hundred. It's a million dollars a year more every year for how much of a project upfront, two million? Give or take?
That's, that's seven hundred thousand is not just for the well.
I understand that, that's what I'm asking.
That includes some of the, the, the pipeline in there.
I'm trying to figure out how the debt service is gonna run out twenty years on that project when you're making that kinda money every year on the rate increase. It doesn't math out.
Well, the rate increase also includes cre, increases in the operating too.
I understand.
Yeah.
But it's not that exponential.
Yeah, well, what you're saying is that it should be.
By year seven, you've collected in the last three years without any other increase, two million dollars.
Yeah, theoretically, it should all be, it's, eventually it's gonna slow down, and you're gonna have a decline in the rate.
Twenty years to pay that off.
Yeah.
That math doesn't, with those rate increases that you're asking for, that doesn't math out.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying twenty years doesn't work.
Right, two, twenty years, yeah, what you're saying is twenty years is too long a time span.
Well, it is with the revenue you're generating off this project and off the rate increases.
Catherine?
Ten years when that's done, you're gonna ask for more, for something else.
So, as part of your annual review, if you do find that you're receiving more revenues than were projected, you can pay off a portion of the loan early if you choose to do that.
So once the loan's paid off, then the, the, what happens with the fees then?
That's what I'm asking, does that go directly to the surface water project? Do you delay the surface water project?
Well, there's a complication here, because in addition to all the costs of the thing, there's operation costs which she brought up.
Right, I agree.
And we have to figure out what those costs would be on an annual basis increase, what percentage? And that might answer the question a little clearer.
How much are we paying right now in operating costs?
I don't know.
Nine hundred, nine hundred and seventy thousand.
For how many wells?
For currently three.
So one point two million, give or take, for another well, another three hundred thousand.
So, um.
Shouldn't take twenty years to pay it off.
This goes out to, this goes out for five years. You can't increase after the fifth year unless you go back and reevaluate this and do this study again. Which is what we've, we did from two thousand fifteen till now. So, uh, you know, at the end of year five, if we were to adopt each of those increases, um, you know, the council, we would take that if there. you know, the council, we would take that, if there's extra money in there, then of course, we would take that into consideration with the next study also. Before any, in, before the increase continued.
Did everybody get that? That this is a five-year plan? In other words, it's projected out to six, it's kind of like your forecast. The weatherman, they're gonna be a little closer to accurate for your five-day forecast. You get out, but this is like a ten-day forecast. Well, we all know sometimes a ten-day forecast might be a little off, okay? But it's forecasted out to ten years. But you're right, we are limited to an actual five-year plan, to a five-year forecast. And beyond that, we have to reevaluate the whole thing. And, and I agree with you, David. Hopefully, you know, at that point, if we're looking seriously at this pipeline, it's not gonna be a twenty-year, you know, unless we have, unless we have been collecting over near the amount of revenues that we should have been collecting, you know, which we should.
At least on the revenue, if you're saying you're inclined, you should have this paid off in seven, eight years tops.
We should, yeah.
Then you're collecting seven, eight hundred thousand dollars every year, there's no debt.
Right.
Other than increased operational, operational costs.
Well, that's when I argue at that point that that price has gotta go down. Because now you've, now you've built the infrastructure, now you're gonna do for the life.
Unless you do the sur- unless you do the surface water.
Yeah.
Because the surface water debt is estimated at five-hundred thousand a year.
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying with, with both, you're gonna end up building something that's gonna have a lifespan that should far outlast your debt service, especially if you're collecting the money you're supposed to be collecting and using for that, okay? So, um, but you're right. So hopefully, and then again, then it's just a matter of maintenance from there. You know, for both the well, any, any of the things that we're talking about, well, pipeline, anything like that. But they're right, that number should go down. And if we're collecting what we should be collecting, it should go down a lot quicker than what that.
Twenty-year half, those rates should not increase as much as you're getting.
No. So, yeah. So what we're looking at is this five years. That's all we can do legally is approve this five years.
So you're.
And actually, all we can legally do is approve the first year of that.
No, you, you could have, you can approve all of them. They don't, they're, it's not required that it comes back to you annually. But that has been our practice.
Yeah, that's been our practice. I think it's a good practice, you know.
Right, right.
And every year, you could decide to, um, impose fees at a lower rate than what's in the schedule, but not at a higher rate.
Right, right.
So you're approving maximum rates for five years.
I think that it's important to realize, everybody in here, well, not everybody, but most people would agree that bringing in this surface water pipeline is a good idea. I think that's kind of an accepted fact. Well, this is the plan to bring it in. I think everybody should, this is the best that we've got so far. And we could sit here and try to figure out numbers and look at this math, uh, for, forever, but this is what we have in front of us. This is the plan that we're bringing, that's been brought to us, that we have to decide on. And like I said, there's lots of checks and balances here. We're gonna check this every year. We have to vote on it again. Nothing is set in stone. And I would just like to say that this is the plan. It, it accomplishes two things. We get the well. You know, if you project it all the way out, we get the pipeline. Those are two positive things. We don't know what's gonna happen with the groundwater sustainability act. And so this is a unique position for Esclon that we have this ability to bring this pipeline in. And this pays for that theoretically on paper, and that's why I've made the motion to approve.
Anybody else like to speak from the audience, please? If you have, if you have anything to say, please come up and say it before I close the public hearing. Angelo.
Well, all I wanted to say was that Ballinger brought up, you people were thinking maybe twenty years and he knew these figures and he figured about seven the most. And where's the rest of the money to go? See, and it's the old story, you know? You don't have to pay that, you'll go into the general fund. If the general fund, well, we don't know, we, you guys got it, you know, you get water from Tracy, money. You just gotta, that's gonna be for the water fund. That's gonna be pipeline, true, you know, anything. But you guys, you know, once you get in the general fund, it's got tentacles. You know what I mean? We went from twenty to about seven and you guys all sort of agreed about, yeah, that's probably right. You don't know for sure, but like you said, could this, it is, but you sound pretty like you knew what you're talking about. So, and you know, you had a twenty-year, you're going to seven years, what's all that money going every year? You guys gotta come up with a solution. That's all gonna go for the water system, sewer system, anything to do with the house, clean water, like, you know. And you just gotta make your mind. I know it's hard, fellas. I'm not trying to criticize, I know it's, but you just gotta do it.
Yeah, is it?
The old story, money gets in the pot.
And, yeah, this is gotta, it's supposed to be all for the water enterprise funded, but I mean, I don't, can we borrow from it or, yeah?
It is.
You're literally required to.
Uh, we don't wanna do that. We don't wanna do that. Borrow from anything.
The, so in the first five years, the numbers, it's, it's, uh, for the groundwater, the well, it's five point some million. And then there's also the surface water project that's six point something million. Is that the anticipated revenues or that we're gonna generate over that first five years is eleven point some million dollars?
Are you talking about the debt service? I, I don't know, where are you reading that?
Now, one of the slides was.
That's the capital improvement plan slide?
Yeah.
That's the total costs. So no, a portion of that would be, um, would be generated from a loan. So the rates are just including the rates to pay off the well loan. Um, and then in the next five years, the rates will be used to pay off the surface water loan. But you'll be, you would get the loan within the first five years for the surface water project and you'd be spending the proceeds of that. But you wouldn't stop paying it back until year six, assuming this timetable is followed.
So to answer Dave's question though, that first five years, that money goes to take care of the, the well. But we still have fifteen additional years of payments on the, on that loan.
You still have fifteen years, but also, um, you know, the rates aren't just for that loan. The rates also go for escalated personnel costs, supplies costs, new O and M costs associated with the new well.
The continued, uh, system rehabilitation for water line replacements.
Water meter replacements.
Meter replacements, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Dave?
You're talking, uh, meter replacements, Dave, well, four-two-five, Sultana. Are, are you talking those new meters that you don't understand, the smart meters?
Yes.
Do we really need smart meters?
Yes.
Why?
Well, there's, there's twofold for the, or there's a, there's some benefits in having the smart meters. For one, right now, um, it takes four days, four to five days of two guys from Public Works to read all the meters in the city. Um, we don't have ways to detect if a customer has a leak. So therefore, when they get their bill that's two months previous and they've already had a leak, sometimes it's, it's a, it's a, a big cost because they, they weren't aware of the leak. So the smart meters actually can help detect that. Um, in, the state has new laws out and new procedures for, um, the city to be able to shut off water, which is going to increase, um, the manpower that's going to be needed for all of that. So some of the manpower that we're gonna save from the meters is going to have to be used for, um, collecting water bills or shutting off the whole process that, that is going to have to be implemented.
And how long can you delay these smart meters?
Um, well, I mean, that would be up to council. Um, it's going to be part of the infrastructure modernization plan that's coming up.
Well, I'm just saying, you might be able to come up with a few extra bucks if you could either not do them or delay them or put them in slower than you planned. Just a thought. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Dave.
Do we have to approve all five years or can we approve it one year at a time and come back? Or we'd have to go through the whole two-eighteen process?
You'd have to do the whole, the whole process over.
Yeah, you have to start.
But again, you're, if you, if you approve all five years, you're just approving the maximum.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, uh, we are not approving all five years at once. It's gonna come back to us every year. You know, for the next year's rating. In other words, you, you, yeah, you've improved a structure by which you have five potential years of rate increases, okay? Every year, it comes back to us to make the decision, do we want to go ahead with the twenty-twenty-one scheduled rate increase? You know, and that, as an example, and that's, you know, that's how it works. So basically, what we're asking tonight, what the motion is tonight, is to accept the water study, okay? Catherine, thank you. Here's what we've done. Here's what we're looking at. Here's the, the theoretical plan. And therefore, boom, you accept that and you go with year one and only year one of the increases.
You're gonna put in the motion to mandate that it's on an annual basis that we look at this?
So our public hearing is still open, just FYI too.
I'm sorry?
The public hearing is still open?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. It'll, it'll stay open as long as, as long as anybody wants to keep, you know, that's fine. That's not a problem at all. Um, that is a good point. It's just been policy up till now to bring up the annual increases, right?
But, well, it was set when the last rates were adopted. It was the same direction that council gave staff at the last rates when we adopted them was that they come back to the council.
Because it could be an amendment to this actual motion to go ahead and, uh, you know, with, that, it would be in writing that we would have the annual review of the water, the next year's water rate increase before we increase it.
It could be included in the, the motion, yes.
In addition, we wouldn't endet ourselves any more than we have approved.
Well, that should go without saying.
Well, it should go without saying, but it doesn't always have to.
Well, any debt that happens would come to the council, so.
So the motion on the table. And by the way, I'm gonna say for everybody again because the, the public hearing still is open. Consideration of, is to adopt the increase in water service fees based on the water rate study report.
I'm gonna add the amendment.
Well, I need to have somebody else make that, make the amendment actually technically legally. I wanna amend his, uh.
You wanna amend your motion?
Oh.
We can't hear you.
I can't amend it.
No, no, no.
Who can?
I cannot amend it.
Who can?
The maker of the.
Uh, the other four of you. Anybody else?
All right, what, what's, what am I, what's the amendment?
You should probably close the public hearing before you can vote.
We're looking at amending this motion. Does anybody have any question as to what direction we're gonna be going with the amendment?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
The amendment is that each annual increase would be brought back to the council for approval.
Right.
Could not be approved without the authority of the council.
Right.
I like, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. Do you accept the amendment?
I accept the amendment.
Well, hold on, because we can't hear you what your amendment is.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Okay, I.
Do you mind, uh?
The amendment would be that it brought back annually for approval by the council and it can only pass with the approval of the council.
Okay. Now, either the amendment needs a second or do you accept the amendment, maker, mayor, maker of the motion?
I accept the amendment.
Okay, and I will accept the amendment as well and therefore becomes part of the motion. Okay. So is there any question about that out there? No? Okay. Perfect. Well, I know, I know, but, you know, I know. Uh, okay. Uh, at this point, unless anybody has anything else to say, I'd like to close a public hearing uh, that, that is based on the actual discussion of the motion on the table. And I will bring it back to council for, for vote.
Yep.
All those in favor? On the, the maker? Yeah, yes, I, I second the motion, but I cannot make an amendment to the motion. It's, it's a quirk. It's a quirk of the book. I don't know, I didn't write it. Um, all those in favor, please, of the motion to adopt an increase in, the increase in water service fees based on the water rate study report and to, I want the exact wording, please, if you don't mind. Jamie, for the amendment?
Be brought back annually to the council to accept each increase.
Okay.
Not to accept, to approve?
To approve each increase. I wanna make sure we get perfectly clear on that for here, everybody, okay?
Approve each increase.
It's council that has the right to adjust that number. I didn't hear that. It's accept or approve, but you can change it.
We do have the right to adjust that number. We, you're right. This will be excluding that right to adjust that number. That's a good point. That's a good point.
Well, then let's modify the motion again.
Okay.
We have that authority.
You have the authority. You just can't go beyond what the, the rates are set.
Right.
So the, the rates that have been presented and that we are about to accept, those are the maximum amounts that we as a council can approve, but we can approve any amount below that. As in our inherent authority. So we're, there's no need to add that to the motion.
Right.
The only addition to the motion is that on an annual basis, when these rates are subject to increase, that it, the, uh, rates have to be brought back to the council and the council has to approve any increases.
I, I think that's what was in.
Yes.
Yep, just making the record.
Clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to administrative matters. Uh, the council reviewed and accept the annual audit report for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. I believe this is you again, Tammy?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Catherine.
Just a challenge, huh?
So, um, for the council's review tonight is our annual audit report from fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. Um, and Michelle Gallagher is here from Clendenham Bird who conducted the audit. Uh, just a couple of items. Uh, we actually had a savings and general fund of four-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. Um, and it's a combination of unanticipated revenues and savings in our expenditures. Uh, we had originally projected a surplus of fifty-two thousand. Um, so with the Indian surplus, our general fund reserve balance is now four million, three-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand. And there's a non-spendable of five-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. And an operating budget reserve of two million, equipment reserves at two-hundred-and-five thousand, and debt service reserve of seven-hundred-and-eight thousand. Calpers unfunded liability reserve of two-hundred thousand and currently an undesignated amount of six-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. So, um, I will let Michelle do her presentation and then if you have any questions, um, another item that staff is asking is that the council would take that surplus and increase our equipment reserve and Calpers, um, liability reserve by a hundred-and-fifty thousand each. Well, go ahead, Michelle, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, council members, like you said, I'm Michelle Gallagher. I'm the audit partner at Clendenham Bird and Company. Uh, we have performed your audit for several years now, um, and we did once again this year. Um, the audit came back with an unqualified opinion, which is the highest standard opinion that you can receive. There has been no management letter, um, issued. There was no issues with your internal control, uh, procedures that were in place throughout the whole year. Uh, Tammy and her staff helped us, uh, probably from about June or July, uh, through November in compiling, uh, your financial statements along with, uh, the notes and her, uh, management and discussion and analysis, which is at the beginning of your, um, audit. Um, there were no significant changes in the audit. There's no new disclosures. Our last big, um, uh, disclosures were the Calpers, Gatsby sixty-eight that is now required of you guys. Kind of just shows you what your unfunded li- your portion of Calpers unfunded liability. I know that we went through that quite a bit last year and so pretty much nothing has changed in any of that reporting. Um, so as Tammy had stated, there is, was significant savings, um, in your general fund. Um, like I said, the internal control procedures were, um, in line with what, um, your policies are and procedures that are in place. Um, so, uh, with that, I have any questions?
Where all the savings come from?
It's a combination. So there were some, uh, increases, uh, in revenues, in sales tax and property tax. Between the two of those, there was about, um, almost a hundred thousand. But one of our largest increases was actually in, uh, interest. Um, so interest earned on our money that is, um, within our, uh, investment with Chandler and Leif. It actually had an increase of, uh, almost seventy thousand dollars.
Had a good stock market?
Yeah, so, um, the, there was over, oh, there was about two, over two-hundred thousand in revenues that really weren't anticipated. And then just multiple savings across all of our departments. Um, some in personnel, um, in, in medical. So even though an employee may not take medical, I still budget for that medical in case that employee leaves and somebody comes in and we have that, that burden. So there are some savings there. Um, and, um, we had some stuff that was carried over, um, the house. we had some stuff that was carried over, um, the housing element and general plan update, there was about seventy thousand, eighty thousand that carried over to this year, um, that was part of that, um. And that that really, it was just kind of spread out across all of those departments where where those savings came from.
Great, nice work.
The increase in sales tax, is there a specific place where that came from?
No, no, um-
Everybody's raising their prices.
Yeah, it was overall, yeah, so, I mean, because we, you know, we we did leave, we lose, uh, boat country, um, so, and maybe I probably projected a little more conservative on the conservative side because of that, um, but we've had others that have picked up some of that slack, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Are there any further questions? Audience, do you have any questions of Michelle, or Tammy, or anything else regarding the audit?
No questions about good news.
I heard from all the other discussions.
Everybody's tired already, what?
I heard that, Robert.
Uh, I will point out that as part of this audit, there are several pages, including some that do talk about each and every enterprise fund, including summaries of the enterprise fund, if you're not into numbers, if you are into numbers, then, uh, delve the details, 'cause they're right there, you know, to check out the health of the fund, so. Uh, it is an actionable item, and then like Tammy pointed out, there can be two, either two separate motions, or there can be one motion, uh, that would be review and accept the annual audit for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and to put a hundred fifty thousand of the surplus in equipment reserve and a hundred fifty thousand per reserve. So you could either have two different motions, or you could have one motion.
I would do-
Do the same thing.
I would make a motion to accept the annual audit report for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and increase the equipment reserves and the cowpers reserve a hundred fifty thousand each.
I got a question before you get carried away with that, um, what's the deal on the money being moved to those different funds? Any particular reason those two, those two funds?
So, um, they're actually within the general fund, they're just reserves that we set aside. So equipment reserve typically, um, assists in replacing annual computers, vehicles, um-
Appreciation.
Yeah, the police vehicles is our big one, um, that we use that equipment reserve for. Cowpers, we've all heard of the big scare coming of, that we're gonna get hit in, um, twenty-one, or twenty twenty, which I believe it's twenty twenty-one fiscal year, so in July, that there's there's gonna be a big jump in cowpers. So that's just helping the the thought process to help in that, lessen that blow of a big expense.
Okay, motion on the table?
Seconded.
And motion's been seconded, uh, now we'll proceed on discussion of the motion that has been moved and seconded on the table. Council members, any additional discussion, audience, any questions? Okay, uh, let's see, Jamie, would you mind reading the motion back, please, before we proceed to vote?
It is moved, seconded by Crummick Merkin to accept the annual audit report for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and authorize an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to both the equipment and cowpers unfunded liability reserves.
Proceed vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay, motion passes five to zero, and on to item number five. With the consideration of approving the appointment of council members of various committees and commissions, and actually, we only have one appointment, and Tammy, please explain.
Yes, so every year, um, the mayor appoints council members to various committees and or commissions, the entire council should then vote on the appointment in order to provide consensus. So I've attached the complete local appointments list, but currently, there is only one that have expiring terms, and that's regarding the San Joaquin County Advisory Water Commission. Um, representatives are appointed for a four-year term, um, they meet the third Wednesday of each month at one P M. In Stockton, and current, um, incumbent is Walt Merkin is our primary representative, and Ed Alves is our alter- alternate, their terms expire in February of twenty twenty.
Okay, uh, let's just go and dive into it, um, well, council member Merkin, would you like to continue on as the city Esclon representative?
Well, I'd rather take a beat and then go to that meeting, but yes, I'll take it.
Okay, well, since that's a reen endorsement, council member, excuse me, Mayor Protem Alves, would you like to continue to be the alternate?
I can be the alternate.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, let's see, is this an actionable item?
Yes.
It is an actual item.
So we will be reappointing-
Actual item in the sense of a motion, that's what I mean.
Yes.
Okay, um, let's go and have a motion to that effect then, please.
Move on staff's recommendation.
Second.
Then move, it's been moved on staff's, well, actually, it's on staff's recommendation, it's council member Merkin's acceptance and Mayor Protem Alves' acceptance.
Okay, how about this, move on-
The reappointment.
Reappointment motion.
Okay.
Of existing members on the water board.
All right, uh, it's been moved and seconded, discussion on the motion? Saying none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay, motion passes five zero. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your sense of volunteerism, it's very nice. Uh, let's see, I believe we are down to council communications, council member Crummick.
Um, I think it's great news that, um, we had some savings and that there was, uh, you know, the two main sources, property tax, sales tax. I still think that we need to look at our, uh, development, uh, impact fees and the fees it costs for people to open up businesses and start new things here in town. I know of a particular, uh, venture that's sort of in the works right now, that is, um, it is being hampered because the city fees are, you know, they're 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 high, and, um, I think that we wanna stimulate economic growth, that, um, we should look at those, so I'd be in favor of of eventually, hopefully soon, sometime this year, looking at our impact fees for development and finding ways to, uh, lower those and incentivize economic growth. Uh, with that being said, I think that's all I've got.
All right, council member Crummick, thank you very much, council member Legero.
Thank you, Mayor Swift, uh, I agree, the the numbers are are great to see. Uh, that's testament to the, uh, conservative budgeting that Tammy and staff continue to use here, despite, uh, some calls for us to be more, uh, liberal with our numbers and our spending. I I think this is, uh, this is the time when you have money like that, you set it aside, you put it in rainy day funds, you, uh, put it where you anticipate there are gonna be problems, so again, great job on the budget, great job on the audit, it's always nice to get that unqualified, uh, recommendation during the audit time, so, great job by Tammy, great job by staff, making sure that we're financially healthy and we're in such better shape than, uh, two thousand and eight, when all of our income tanked. So it's nice to see some actual returns on our investments, too, so, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Legero, thank you very much, council member Merkin.
I keep hearing rumors that Orlando's is going to open the old big boy, is there any movement on that?
We do understand that that they are in escrow right now.
Yeah, they waited till the new year.
Yeah.
Um, in recommendation from their attorney, so, they're supposed to be moving into escrow this this month.
Okay, are they still planning on putting in gas pumps?
Yes.
Are they gonna?
That's what we've heard, we haven't seen any plans.
We've asked for a site plan on that.
Are they gonna hook up the city drainage so they don't have that swamp out there every year when it rains?
Uh, we've discussed that with them and let them know ahead in advance that they were gonna be required to repair the, replace out the dry well there, that's what the issue is on site, so they'll handle their own stuff on site with that dry well, and it's it's gonna have to be replaced, so he knows that he has to contact an engineer to have that repaired.
Okay, and-
Yeah, it's still a pool weeks later, I see that when I drive by.
Yeah, and I don't usually watch the Golden Globes or anything like that, because I hate to listen to Hollywood, you know, tell me how I should be living my life, but I've become a Ricky Gervais fan, kinda love that guy, I love that guy. Yeah, excellent, truth hurts.
Okay, council member Merkin, thank you very much, Mayor Protem Alves.
Um, nothing.
Okay, all right, thank you, a couple things real quick, I believe we have a joint school board meeting, school district meeting this Thursday, if anybody would like to attend, please do so, eight A M. at the district office. Uh, again, I'd like to echo what, uh, council member Legero said regarding the, uh, the great work on the audit and the the tight budgeting, um, and you know, it's funny, we're segueing off of that toward the, what we debated tonight about what the water study, and I've gotta say, I've gotta thank everybody, every opinion, every thought, every bit of analysis, that's how you have to hone, and you have to forge something like that, you know, not only from the council, but from the audience, as to try to find that that happy medium between keeping costs down for the public and trying to be able to get, deliver what we're supposed to be delivering to them, and making the state happy at the same time. So it's a tight, it's a real tight, tight rope, and I appreciate all the thoughts and conversation and debate on that tonight. That's, uh, I think that's how we're gonna keep things tight in this town, so, at any rate, uh, happy new year, everybody, and thank you very much for coming to the council meeting tonight, I declare this meeting adjourned.